Call the meeting of the Bay County Board of Commissioners together Tuesday, August 15, 2023 at 4:00 PM, Commission Chambers. We have the roll call.
Niemec.
Present.
Banajak.
Present.
Mallett.
Here.
Herrick.
Here.
Radke.
Here.
Present.
Begic.
Here. All rise for the invocation and pledge.
Almighty God, we ask that you will guide and give leadership to every member of this Board of Commissioners, and we ask that you will give them knowledge and understanding so that the decisions made today and always will benefit every citizen of this community. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Great. We have the minutes from 7:1823. Move to approve.
Support.
Discussion? All who are in favor say aye. Motion passes. We have an agenda. I have some additions to the agenda. I think they are on your table. We have Resolution 2023-150, appointment of Keegan-Bingle as a Equalization Director. Looking for a motion to add that to the agenda. Motion approved. All who are in favor. Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. And we have a clerical error on Resolution 2023-134. There was a zero missed. Zeros aren't bad when it's in the sense position, but other clerical positions sometimes it changes the number a bit. So I'm looking for, we have a corrected copy of that provided to you. All right, it's in the meeting.
I'll move it to be corrected.
Yes. All who are in favor say aye. Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. I guess I need the total agenda approval with those additions.
I'll move it.
Support. Discussion? All who are in favor say aye. Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Citizen inputs. We have five minutes per citizen. You don't need to sign the roster. If you want to sign, you can. And if you did introduce yourself, that would be good also. So this is the time for citizens to speak.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'm Gary Phillips, an applicant for the Department of Health and Human Services Board. I just wanted to say a couple things about that. My background, I spent 28 years in the Bay City Public Schools in the maintenance department. In the last 10 years, I spent as the Facility Director at the Bay County Medical Care Facility. So I'm very well aware of the problems, the issues, the struggles, the hurdles that they have gone through. I retired two years ago, so I'm not completely up to date, but it wouldn't be too difficult to get back up to speed. And I know there's been some questions and concerns about the remodel project and the money that has been spent. I would encourage all the Commissioners to go out and tour the facility and see what is going on and what we've done. There's been 40 years of Band-Aids, poor construction practices, many other things that led to the increase in the construction project. And it's still not finished because it was shut down because of COVID. And I am looking to assist and finish the project that I was involved with when it started. And we have a beautiful facility, wonderful employees. I would encourage whomever you appoint to be positive, not negative and attacking what is going on out there. We have some of the wonderful things that the facility does. I don't know if you were aware, but it's laundry services. We do 2,000 pounds of laundry a day, seven days a week, 365 days a year. We are probably one of the only medical care facilities and/or nursing homes, there is a difference between the two, in the state of Michigan that is 100% generator backed up. Most of the nursing homes, medical care facilities just have a minimal amount of generator. The state requirement is minimum. The Bay County care facilities, 100% backed up. We have two 500 KVA generators. On most days, one generator can run it. If there was any kind of a natural disaster, we could go a minimum of 10 days without refueling. So the facility and the residents are in very good hands in that aspect. We also have, we installed in 2016 a geothermal well field, and that was to accommodate part of the new construction and the new heat pumps that we put in. We had two cooling towers that were there before. They were 15-ton cooling towers, and we had 26 tons of heat pumps attached to each one. And they were okay for about nine months out of the year when it got in the summertime into the 80s, especially not the 90s. The cooling towers couldn't keep up. They were too small. The return line temperature was too hot. We burned up compressors. They probably saved $10,000 by putting in the smaller cooling towers, and it cost us about $60,000 to replace all the equipment that was destroyed because they got too hot. So if you'd like some more stories, I could go on with dozens and dozens that were improperly done over the years, and our goal was to make the facility better and fix all the past problems. So again, I would like you to consider me for appointment. If not, I understand Bay City politics. I understand it all too well. But again, whoever you appoint, please be positive and not negative, not attacking, not going after the facility, but helping them out. And I would encourage everyone to tour it and go out there with the attitude of what can I do to help? So again, thank you very much. Commissioners, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Thank you. Anyone else wish to speak?
Marnie Westfall, Essexville. Also applied for the board position through DHS. My background is in education, K-12 literacy, master's degree from Saginaw Valley. But I've been worked with at Western for a while, and after that, Bear and at ISD, working with a lot of people in the community to get their GEDs and get ahold of some things that they may need. After that, at Bay Psychological, and now I'm at Recovery Pathways as a case manager. Most of my days are filled with working with clients who try to navigate through DHS and do a great job, and with working with DHS employees. I do presentations there. I work hand-in-hand with CPS and foster care, work with the leaders there, not only to help make their jobs better, but help our community members' lives better, from bridge cards to housing to utilities. We're in there all the time. The leaders in the building know who I am, and I understand that on the board. We already have a police officer. We have, excuse me, Ridney, who works at the ISD, and I think someone in my position might round that out very well. And also working with the care facility as well, I've helped clients navigate getting loved ones in and out of there, so I'm familiar with that group with it right down the road from me. So yes, we need someone very positive in the position, somebody who understands the background and the struggles and the barriers that not only DHS has, but what the clients have in the community, with what we all, our families and friends that live right here, that the barriers to their success, and the unique challenges that they may have at the working with the DHS process. There's a lot of wonderful opportunities there, from the ground level to the state level to the federal level, that I think if we put our heads together, we could make a much smoother process for not only the employees, but for the clients in the community as well. So I'm very excited about it. You know, I understand it's like a small paper. Like, I do it for free, just because it's something they feel really passionate about. So I'm happy to put my hat in the ring for the position, and I know you'll make the best decision, because you guys do great jobs. Thank you. Have a good day.
Thank you. Anyone else wish to speak?
Good afternoon. I'm Jill Schmidt. I also applied for the position. As my application has presented, I've been an RN, I have a bachelor's in nursing for 25 years, most of that taking care of the elderly, seeing both sides of the coin of taking care of them, making sure they get into a quality nursing home, the barriers of getting them into a quality nursing home. I don't have the familiarity maybe as some of the other applicants, but maybe I have fresh eyes and can see something new that we can focus on. We also, in the hospital, have to work within budgets, so I'm familiar with that. I just really care about the elderly and want to make sure that they are taken care of the best way that we all can do. Thank you for considering me.
Thank you. Anyone else wish to comment? Anyone else? Anyone else would be closing the citizen input? Petitions and Communications. We have Mr. Phil Eich here from the Bay City Chamber of Commerce, I believe. Somebody pays him.
Good afternoon, everybody. My name is Phil Eich from Hay Bay City, and this is Quarterly Report Number Two of really what is, it says Year One, but we're kind of in Year Two, but this is our second quarterly report. Marketing, the kind of the marketing overview, look at all those numbers, oh my goodness. I won't go through every number, but I'll go through some of the most critical ones. And so in that first column, you've got kind of our audience, the number of followers and subscribers through email and various other channels. In that second column, impressions, that's the number of times marketing content from Hay Bay City has been seen. And then all the way on the right side, the views, listens, that's podcast listens, video watches on YouTube and other places as well. So in that first column, go all the way down to the very bottom, total audience size of 11,038 people. That's an increase of 2,757 from Quarter One. Impressions, the number of times a piece of Hay Bay City content has been seen, an increase of 191,000 from Quarter One to 1.61 million. So that's pretty cool. And then all the way over on the right side, views and listens, an increase of 23,000 to So we're trending up. There's a couple instances, for instance, if you see on Instagram, kind of a drop of 10% engagements in that fourth column, a drop of 500. That's to be expected, and quarterly is really a great way of looking at these numbers because it gives us a three-month chunk. But as most of us being on social media, the world of social media, man, it is crazy. All of a sudden, something happens in the world, the war in Ukraine, some celebrity is now divorcing another celebrity, and that kind of takes people's attention. So gradually over time, what we expect to see is month-to-month volatility. Over a three-month span, a trend, and what we're really going to look at at the end of Year One is how did we trend from point A to point B? And that's a great measure of success. And so the breadcrumbs indicate that we're trending in a positive direction, which is very cool. Content overview, so what kinds of stories are we telling? What kind of photos? What kind of videos? And there's a whole list of them. And there's a whole list of them because as we go through this process, we're testing and adjusting different approaches. And an approach that we're taking right now is telling stories and displaying content in different kinds of ways so that we can represent more communities, more people, more, 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 more. In the world of marketing, it's both quality and quantity. You can't just do something well once. You have to do something well lots and lots and lots of times over one year and two years and three years and 10 years and for the life of this entire community. And so that's what we're starting to do here in this second quarter, is really adjusting the content marketing approach. And so you see a whole slew of different stories, everything from Vantage Plastics and their great investment in the area, to Frank's Great Outdoors, which is coming up on the next slide, but it's actually published and out into the world right now. And so lots and lots of cool things. We talk about diversity in content marketing here, both in terms of what is that story highlighting? So businesses, education, community fabric, things like that, as well as location. Bay City, where in Bay City? Is it Midland Street? Is it downtown? Is it other business districts, townships, other outlying communities? And then you look at diversity in terms of who is the person being featured? One of the top three attractive and retentive qualities of a community is, do I feel welcomed there? Or is it inclusive of different kinds of people? And so that's really the art and science of this portion of the marketing, is there's so much going on in a county of 103,000 people. How do you do your best at really portraying an effective and accurate picture of the community? And we're inching closer and closer to that every single quarter. So these are the pieces of content that we've published over Quarter Two. This is upcoming pieces of content that you see. Frank's Great Outdoors is published, Go Great Lakes Bay, talking about Bay County tourism and regional tourism here. We've got school superintendents. We've got shelters for folks transitioning out of foster care, some really cool small businesses as well, and looking forward to telling these stories in a lot of different ways. Social media comparison, I used this slide in the first quarterly report just to give you kind of a picture of where does Hay Bay City compare within the context of similar efforts? And this is the list that I used in the first report, so this is also the list that I'm using here in the second report. We're right there in that middle highlighted row with 4.4,000 page likes. We're actually around 6,000 followers currently, which is super cool. In comparison to places like Ann Arbor, Pittsburgh, Pennsylvania, Atlanta, Georgia, Southwest Michigan, Traverse City, we're growing exponentially faster. Now, I'm going to qualify that by saying we're also newer, and so that's, to a certain extent, to be expected. But at the same time, we're going really, really fast in terms of a workforce development effort. I talked about this in the first report. One of the opportunities we have here in this community is to do a workforce talent attraction retention effort and make it cool, make it fun, make it intriguing, make it something that really communicates on a human level. Because if you talk, and if you look at a lot of these other efforts, it's kind of missing that community spark. Yes, it's about jobs, but what else is there? And so that's really the thing that we're seizing here, is how do we, yes, accomplish all of these metrics, but at the same time, really uplift our community and make them feel amazing about being here, communicating humans and human stories, and we're doing that. And the reason why we do it that way, you look all the way up at the top, Made With Uncommon Character in St. Louis, Missouri, it's the top ranking workforce development effort that I've looked at, and this is a similar approach that they use. I'm going to say that we do it a little bit better, but the philosophy is still the same. It's how can we attract people that are going to not only live and work here, but also love it here? And that's what we're going to do. Job Board Overview, this comes from our True Job platform. April, May, June, we've had a total of 41 employers sign up. We've had 289 jobs posted. Those jobs have been viewed 9,151 times, so there's a huge interest in people looking for work here. That also floats with the number of times apply has been clicked. We can track people's engagement up until that point, because typically what happens is they click Apply, and then that takes them to an employer's website, and what happens beyond that point, we are not able to track. We don't know if they've actually submitted an application or not. And that's one of the tricks and one of the bugs that we have to work out. True Job is absolutely the best local indeed job platform that we've looked at. That being said, we have to figure out how we get more employers enabling a function where people can apply directly through True Job. So if you look at the number of apply clicks, there's 91 people have applied to these jobs, but we're not able to track them, and so we have a total of two jobs filled. Based on the math, you could make the case, there are more people out there that have been hired because they've seen it. I can't tell you that in confidence though, because I can't prove it. And so we'll see on the very last slide, one of the next steps is transitioning really large, critical employers from being automatically scraped through artificial intelligence to manually inputting their job positions into the portal so that we're able to track that. It's going to be a little bit of a hard sell because right now we're making their life really easy. They don't have to do a thing because artificial intelligence just goes in and does it for them. But unfortunately, we're not able to track that. And so that's going to be kind of this next quarter and the following quarter, giving everybody a heads up, saying, hey, just so you know, we've been doing this for you, but we're going to need you to go in in the future and list these positions. And that's kind of the analytics part of this. There are a few really, really cool updates that we want to tell you that don't fit in within Quarter Two, but to start that off, I'll hand it off to my lady, Marlena.
Well, good afternoon, everyone. I'm Marlena Court, the Director of Resource Development with the Bay Area Chamber of Commerce. So just a few things that we just wanted to update you on. We talked in the previous quarter, some of the programming, how are we directly connecting our employers with students, with our students in our colleges, local universities, and with our high schools? Well, with that, we have, as I mentioned before, our Business and Education partnership that we've started again. And I'm so excited about it because we got our superintendents from all across Bay County, all engaged, along with our business partners, engaged to connect with one another to say, okay, this is what we need to do, so we can make sure we're delivering appropriate programming in the schools to help our students understand the industries we have here in Bay County, because they simply don't know. With that, we have mock interviewing. It was only going on in just a couple of schools. What better way to connect our industry leaders that we have here in Bay County? Give them an opportunity to talk to our students. So this is giving them the opportunity to go into the classrooms, go into the schools, and sit down and actually talk with the students and let them know, this is what we're looking for, helping them with those soft skills, helping them to understand a firm handshake is important, eye contact is important. Mad City Money, these are some programs that we are working on to help students understand financial literacy, understanding how to navigate after high school or after college, whatever that may be. And it's a very robust type of program. And don't be surprised if I reach out to some of you to come volunteer at some of these different events that we have in our school districts. But these are opportunities where we're going to help our students see, hey, there's accounting positions, there's administrative work, there's attorney positions to be an attorney, anything like that that are right here. So we're trying to bring that right to the doorstep of our schools. Job shadowing and more work-based learning opportunities. We need to open up that pipeline a lot more. So if there is an opportunity with organizations you work with or know of, that's what we're trying to do. What better way to develop our talent is to create those opportunities so we can create a direct pipeline and to help them and groom them when it's time for them to get into the workforce. And we're also focusing on building more career nights, where we're bringing employers into the schools to sit down to talk one-on-one. And most of all, we've all been talking about it with our students, mental health. We're bringing some mental health courses that are, and none of this is costing the schools anything, and it's not pulling any of the instructors, instructors, the teachers from any instruction time. We have resources available at the doorstep of our superintendents and our work-based learning coordinators, and they're excited about it. I sat down with Matt Schmidt today. He was so excited, and it just warmed my heart, because we actually know we're doing something to make a difference. We have so many partners with the ISD, with the Career Center, that we're so happy that are all engaged with us, and we just thank you again for the opportunity to allow us to move forward, so that way we can help Bay County grow with our workforce. That's all that we have for now.
I have more. I have more. Two other things that don't fit into the quarterly report. One, this week, we launched the Hay Bay City Community Calendar. It is so rad. It is super, super cool. What it does is if you go to haybaycity.com, if you scroll all the way down to the bottom of the homepage, it's there, but there's also haybaycity.com/events. And what that does is I gave artificial intelligence all of these publicly available websites with events. And what it does is it automatically populates this calendar so that at any time, somebody can hop into this calendar, and about 14 days, anywhere from 14 days to three months out, they can see what's coming up in Bay City, everything from public meetings to events in downtown Bay City. It's very, very cool. AI is not perfect though, and so if you look at that calendar and you're like, oh, we have a very important event, and it's not listed there, there's a little button, you click that button, you type in your event, it goes to me, and I say approve, and boof, we've got a really robust community calendar. One of the big needs that we had is, especially from citizens, is what's happening here? I mean, you sometimes hear the criticism, there's nothing happening here, and that's not true, but where does that come from? It comes from people not knowing what is actually happening. And now we have this one place where people can see across Bay County, all of the things that are happening. It's super, super cool. So check that out. Also, there is so much momentum behind public art happening right now. We just unveiled seven murals, and there's a mural festival happening, and all of a sudden, it seems like the community of Bay County is just like, we want public art! And to help leverage that, part of my responsibility is placemaking. How do we improve the emotional infrastructure of our places that say, hey, this is a cool place? And so I'm working with Studio 23 to create a public art organization, not saying that we are the sole proprietors of public art, because that would be super gross, but just as a point person, because I've had so many businesses reach out to me saying, hey, how can I get a mural on my building? Artists talking to me, hey, if you hear of any buildings that I can paint on, I want to paint on them. And so we started this database of artists and available buildings. We're going to be reaching out to a couple of community organizations, Leadership Bay County. How can we do this, not only do this, but do it in a world-class way and do it in a way that this re-becomes part of our identity? I mean, at one point, Bay City was called Mural City. We're not that anymore, but we can become that again. And so this is very, very, very cool effort, and look for that kind of first project to happen probably in the first part of the year. Next steps, just quickly here, number one, just keep testing and implementing targeted advertising. Just so you know, what I've started doing in this recent four-week span is running ads that are targeting similar-sized communities in Indiana, Ohio, and Illinois. So saying, hey, who is a person that might be interested in some of the same things that's looking for work in a similar kind of community, and then targeting them as well, so folks from out of state. Number two, begin an aggressive employer-focused education implementation campaign. It's not all roses, the work that we're doing. There are some significant challenges. One of the challenges is getting employers to utilize the True Job platform. The second challenge there is encouraging them to follow up on employee leads that we forward onto them. Sometimes what happens is we forward these really qualified folks onto employers, and we don't hear back, they don't hear back. And so what we have to do as this effort is really educate employers about how great this platform is and how it can be great for them as well, and just teaching them about the purpose of it and how we function as attraction retention, that we're almost like their personal headhunters, and we can forward them some really, really high-value and qualified candidates. And so we're going to be starting that, just reaching specifically out to employers. And so we're going to be starting that, just reaching specifically out to employers. That also sets the ceiling for results because the more Bay County employers we have using the board, the more jobs we can fill. And so there's a direct correlation there. They kind of set that ceiling. And so that's going to be a really critical targeted strategic step. Number three, improve relocation content and resources. This is something that we keep chipping away and saying, how can we continue making this website more robust, more resourceful, so that we are really hitting the things that people are looking for? Number four, I talked about just transitioning folks to manually entering their job positions into True Job to improve our tracking. And this last one, rally community partners to support success. The thing that is, the thing that becomes more and more apparent to Marlena and Megan and I as we do this work is that in order for this to be successful, Hay Bay City has to be an everyone effort. There's so, there's so many stakeholders in this community that are important to the success of keeping people here and attracting people here. We cannot fall into the perspective that, that this is it, because it's not it. BEP is a great example of it. We have to reach into the schools and how can we rally them? And so many great things are happening because of that. I just interviewed a woman and she had, she had this great quote. She said, "It takes a village to build a village." And that going forward, I think, is such an important perspective change in, for Hay Bay City is not just what can we do, but how can we bring this community together and say, this is the direction, this is what we need to do, and in the process, we also need your help. The potential is there. I interviewed a young woman, 25 years old, this morning. She moved from Detroit here, back here. She came back home because she was like, you know what? I didn't feel like I had a community in Detroit, but here I do. And then she said, and I'm trying to get my other friends from Royal Oak to come up here too. And so the potential is there. And this effort is so important to really seizing that potential and being kind of this tip of the spear while we rally this entire community to continue building this community. So I'll stop yammering at you. If you have any questions, I would love to try to answer them for you. Ready?
There's less traffic up here too, by the way. If you tell the friends in Royal Oak, it's a lot better driving.
Oh, yeah. Yes, I 100% agree with that.
Yeah, I'm on the Michigan Works Board and we're, yeah, we're, you know, they've got the big job fair coming up and saying, and saying, you know, aggressively looking for people. They also had a young couple who bought my mom's house that were Bay City residents, went to Houston for a few years, are not coming back to Bay City. So that's, that's a sign of some people coming back to the roots.
And to that point, what's so encouraging about that is especially the young people that I've interviewed and I've talked to, is they're really looking for a community where they, they can make some kind of change to, they can make some kind of improvement they can contribute to. A city like Royal Oak, Ferndale, I mean, they got, they got their thing going, man. Like Royal Oak is Royal Oak. Like you go to the bars, you go to the restaurants, you go to the concerts and, but to get really involved in that community, man, that barrier to entry is high. But here in our communities, you can start something really cool and you can do it, and you can do it over and over again, and you can feel like you're part of building something, and that is exciting. It's not just young people saying, hey, what can you give me? It's these young people coming in and saying, what can I give you? Because they understand the dynamic of what a community actually means, and that's so exciting.
Mr. Marsh, I had a question.
Oh, yeah. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just wanted to thank both of you and Megan for the excellent presentation and the metrics. Do we have a breakdown, Phil, on local engagement, like Bay County-centered engagement versus out of the region?
I, I don't have it on the slide, but I can absolutely find that. Yep.
Just, I've heard a lot of comments and I've viewed it, but just wondering, you know, how much local engagement there was.
Yeah.
It's all good.
Yeah, we're, right now predominantly locally engaged. And that's part of the reason with, with the advertising spend is I can take advertisements, I can take pieces of content, and I can directly target areas outside of this immediate area. I mean, if you think about it as a web, that spider web is really, really dense in the middle, and that's what we're kind of working with right now. And so what I'm using funding for with advertising is how can we reach Grand Rapids, Lansing, Detroit, these places that aren't, we have a, we have a less likely chance to organically reach? And so we can funnel money and say, I want to drop this fishing story in the U.P., I want to target fishermen. What I, it's, it's, I won't go into the rabbit hole, but for instance, like with the bass fishing tournaments, we are the only community in the entire country to have back-to-back $100,000 first prize championship bass fishing tournaments. It's our opportunity to really stake our claim as a world-class fishery. And so what I did with the content was, I took that story and those pieces of content, and I targeted people in Michigan that were, one, interested in fishing, but, two, also looking for jobs. And that's, that's why this, this effort is so important is it's more than just throwing a billboard up on 75, which, which can be an important way, but we can target interests that people have and say, we have that. We have literally the best angler in the history of fishing coming here and saying, this is world-class. Don't you want to live and work here too? Heck, yeah, I do. So.
Especially for $100,000.
Especially for $100,000.
Any other questions, comments?
Thank you, Phil.
You've inspired me. Thank you, as usual.
Thank you.
Help fired up.
Thank you. I'm fired up too. Thank you so much, guys.
Thank you.
All right. City of Bay City, notification of resignation.
No, they're not. We need to receive that.
We need to receive that presentation.
Support.
Discussion. All those in favor, say aye. Opposed? Motion passes. City of Bay City, notification of resignation of Joseph Rivet as representative of the City of Bay City to the Bay County Land Bank Authority. I believe he has a higher position now.
Support.
To receive. Discussion. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. Notification of appointment of Shelley Nidzwicki as representative of the City of Bay City to the Bay County Land Bank Authority.
I move to receive it.
Support.
Discussion. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Application for an obsolete property rehabilitation exemption certificate from Hawthorne Realty Group LLC.
Vote to receive.
Support. Discussion. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. Now we have applications for appointment to Bay County Department of Health and Human Services Board to fill a three-year unexpired term. This term does expire 10/31/23, so the winner of this go-round, there'll be another go-round in October, so they need to apply again. So we need to receive the applicants. We have five. We have Gary Phillips, Marnie Westfall, Carrie Pryor, Jeremy Giersbach, and Joe Schmidt.
I move to receive them.
Support.
Discussion. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Now we will go ahead and do the appointment right away. So we will have, each person gets one vote. Whoever gets four votes first is the appointee, at least for two months, so. Okay.
You ready? Okay. Radke.
Marnie Westfall.
Pryor.
Joe Schmidt.
Nemick.
Joe Schmidt.
Banajak.
Joe Schmidt.
Muller.
Marnie Westfall.
Sorry.
Herrick.
Westfall.
Bigick.
Would be Joe Schmidt.
Okay, so we have three votes for Marnie Westfall and four votes for Joe Schmidt.
So I need a motion to make the appointment of Joe Schmidt to the HHS Board.
The appointment of Joe Schmidt.
Support. Discussion. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Joe Schmidt is appointed. At least for two months. Thank you. All right. Reports and resolutions of committees. We have the Ways and Means Committee. Mr. Brinechak.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Resolution number 2023-125, remonumentation peer review group appointments. I move to approve this resolution.
Support. Discussion. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes.
Resolution number 2023-126, 2003 to 2004 Child Care Fund Annual Plan and Budget. I move to approve this resolution.
Support.
Discussion. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes.
Resolution number 2023-127, JAG application for the year 2023-2024. I move this resolution.
Support.
Discussion. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes.
Resolution number 2023-128, O H S P grant application for 2024. I move to approve this resolution.
Support.
Discussion. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Resolution number 2023-129, 2004 SRP grant. I move to approve this resolution.
Support.
Discussion. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Resolution number 2023-130, Bay Health Plan Owner Advisory Fund Grant. I move to approve this resolution.
Support. Discussion. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Resolution number 2023-131, SCP agreement. I move to approve this resolution.
Support.
Discussion. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Resolution number 2023-132, Active Assailant Task Force, AATF Agreement for $21,978.43. I move to approve this resolution.
Support.
Discussion. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Resolution number 2023-133, BCATS M.D. Master Agreement for the year 2024-2026. I move to approve this resolution.
Support.
Discussion. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes.
Resolution number 2023-134, this is the revised copy, Michigan Community Center Grant. I move to approve this resolution.
Support.
Discussion. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Resolution number 2023-135, Boiler Cone Replacement. I move to approve this resolution.
Support. Discussion. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Resolution number 2023-136, Civic Arena Endowment Fund, Bay Area Community Foundation for $19,000. I move to approve this resolution.
Support.
Discussion. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Resolution number 2023-137, Payables. I move to approve this resolution.
Support. Discussion. All those in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries.
Resolution number 2023-138, Bay Metro Agreement. I move to approve this resolution.
Support. Discussion. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes.
Resolution number 2023-139, Viper Firewall Upgrade for $32,264. I move to approve this resolution.
Support.
Discussion. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? I believe that is all for Ways and Means. Personnel Human Services, Commissioner Nemick.
Thank you. Resolution number 2023-140, Office Reclassification, Secretary to Family Evaluators and FOC Assistant, FOC T F 07 to Senior Administrative Assistant and Certified Electronic Recorder. I move to approve.
Support. Discussion. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Resolution number 2023-141, Part-Time Custodian, Kennel Assistant Position in Animal Services. I move to approve.
Support.
Discussion. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Resolution number 2023-142, Brown &amp; Brown Enrollment Agreement in Personnel. I move to approve.
Support. Discussion. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Resolution number 2023-143, Plan of Organization for Health Department.
Support. Although, I think she made the motion, didn't she?
Move to approve.
Support there. Discussion. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Resolution number 2023-144, My Community Dental Centers, a renewal agreement for the Health Department. I move to approve.
Support.
Discussion. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Resolution number 2023-145, N E M C S A Early Head Start Agreement with the Health Department. I move to approve.
Support.
Discussion. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Resolution number 2023-146, CPBC Agreement for the Health Department for the year 2023 to 2024. I move to approve.
Support. Discussion. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Resolution number 2023-147, MOU with McLaren Bay Region for Maternal and Infant Health Collaborative Efforts, the Health Department. I move to approve.
Support.
Discussion. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Commissioner Herrick, would you do the honors for the Board of Commissioners?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Resolution number 2023-148, the Civic Arena Ice Plant Equipment Replacement Bid Award to Service Refrigeration Incorporated for $854,929. I move this resolution.
Support. Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Resolution number 2023-149, Reports to the County Executive for July. I move this resolution.
Support. Discussion. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
And Resolution number 2023-150, I'm going to read a little bit of this and then we'll go on so we at least know what it is. By the Bay County Board of Commissioners, that effective immediately and in compliance with MCL 45-5581E, Board of Commissioners, occurs in the County Executive's appointment of Keegan Bengal through Bengal Assessing Services LLC as Equalization Director for a one-year period with the option to renew it for successive one-year periods throughout the tenure of the County Executive. I move this resolution.
Support.
Any discussion? We're glad to have an equalization director again.
Yes.
Very important people and they're hard to find, so I thank everybody on the search committee. I think Amber did a lot of the work, maybe some other people involved.
I agree with that. But Keegan is actually here to introduce himself. The board has any questions?
Come on up.
Just so you can see it from the other side.
I was going to yield my time as a reporter for everyone to meet Keegan. We're excited about having him on the ground in Bay County and filling in for the vacancies.
I don't know if anybody has any questions for me.
You look pretty young.
That's okay.
You have a lot of knowledge, all right.
Yeah, I hope so. Yeah, I've been the equalization director for Gresham County since 2019 and so when we do a little bit of side assessing through our business, Bengal Assessing Services, and we're looking to get more into the county work rather than the assessing that we've been doing, so we're very thankful for the opportunity and happy to work with you, so.
And a positive thing to note for the Board of Commissioners, we currently have to seek a waiver from the state of Michigan every year because we have a level-three assessor that's acting as our equalization director currently. Keegan is a level-four, so we're not going to have to go back and seek that waiver from the state every year and keep our fingers crossed every October, so we're very excited about that. He seems super excited to start and I think that it will be a great relationship.
You too. Thank you.
How hard is that level-five?
I'm really glad they don't have to.
Way up there, right?
Yeah. I'm glad I still have air.
You offset your own salary, right?
Yeah. So, yep.
Yeah, I know. Equalization's hard. I know all townships we go to have trouble finding people to do their appraising, equalization and stuff, so it's not, not easy to fill with the new regulations from the state, the guidelines that they have, so.
That's great.
Glad to have you on board.
Yeah, thank you and glad to be here. Thank you.
So, we didn't vote on it, should we?
Did we vote on it?
No, we didn't yet. We didn't yet.
Did not vote yet? Okay. Any discussion? More discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. Motion passes.
That would be all from the Board of Commissioners, Mr. Chairman.
Oh, yeah. Thank you. Let's see, so we have the County Executive.
Yeah, I just kind of yielded my time to Mr., well, to Keegan, but I wanted to, to just say that, you know, we did have some productive sessions on our new budget, the 2024 budget, and three of the commissioners attended, spent a lot of time, asked a lot of good questions, and I think our department directors shared a lot of information about, you know, what challenges they're facing in the coming year as well as, you know, long-term needs, you know, looking, looking down the road a bit. So I want to thank the three commissioners who spent so much time as well as the department directors on their presentations. Overall, I thought it was really good interaction and, and it was informative for all of us, so. And that's about all I had, Mr. Chairman.
I'm doing a written report. It's taking me a little longer than I planned, so there are some handouts that they gave us and I'll get some copies to you, so another week or two, I should have it, so. Some interesting reading. Commissioner comments. Any comments from any of the commissioners? Mr. Pryor.
Yes, I'd like to say something regards to one of our businesses that are giving back to our community. That's Munch's Farm Fresh Produce on Center Avenue in Hampton Township. Mr. Munch contacted me in regards to making product to Salvation Army, which I'm a board member of, produce from his, his farm. So I went up there and filled up my vehicle. Mr. Begic came along too. I contacted him, he's also on the board, and we filled up our vehicles and we took it over to Salvation Army for food giveaway, which happens every second and fourth Monday of the month. Also, they give back to our veterans here in the community. His father, who I went to school with, he fought in Vietnam. His brother-in-law fought in Vietnam, was killed. And they give money back to the community and they, they try to give more every year. So I just want to shout out to them, you know, appreciate what they do to support folks in need as far as food is concerned and our veterans in the community.
They're on Center Avenue, west of the cross street. Are they passing the township hall?
Yeah, past Hampton Township.
Past the township hall. They have a, they have a food stand out there, too.
Yep, they do.
Yep. His name is Munch, M-U-N-C-H. So that's good for the food business. Any unfinished business? Or any other commissioner comments, by the way?
I just wanted to share that I went to the Bay County Fair and it was absolutely wonderful. And I went through the horse barn and then the livestock and then I stayed for the auction. And what, what did I learn a lot? I wanted for the turkey, live. And so, and then what happens when you bid on this is that the students, the young people, that they put that towards college education or trade schools, and so it's a worthwhile cause. And I happened to see my former doctor was there and she had been to the Saginaw County Fair and she said, "The Bay County Fair, the livestock was so clean, the buildings compared to the Saginaw County Fair." So that was another plus for our Bay County. Thank you.
And you bought a?
I bought a turkey.
What'd you pay?
To be delivered live.
What did you pay, Kathy?
What?
What did you pay?
I'm just kidding.
We've been known to pay some exorbitant rates.
Well, I made it out to the fair with my grandchildren. We rode a lot of, I didn't ride a lot of rides. They rode a lot of rides and we had elephant ears and corn dogs, so it was good. The fair seemed to be getting a little more each year, a little more stuff added on, more things to do, so, and I do, they're doing work, they're doing a lot of activities. I know some people went out to watch the wrestling.
Micro wrestling.
Small, small people wrestling.
Yeah.
They have a lot of things throughout the year, actually. They do a lot of fundraising, so that's a good thing.
It was well-attended, Russell patch.
Vaughn, Tim and Casey and I all went for like the opening of it, the morning of, and we were there for the crowning of the prince and princess and king and queen of the fair, so it was, it was exciting for all those kids. It was nice to watch.
It is our fairgrounds, you know, they lease it from us, so we need the support of them. They're doing, they're doing good work.
Yep.
And the unfinished business?
Nothing with football.
New business? We have chance for public input again, for anybody who's interested. Second go-round, going once, going twice, going three times, okay? Miscellaneous announcements.
Yep, yep, yep.
Yes, yes.
We can't forget that in two weeks, two weeks from Thursday, the high school football season kicks off. All local teams will be in action. I'm not sure who's home. All I know, the only game, I know the All Saints game is on the radio. Nick will be there. Nick will be a new part of the program, yes, over there, so we'll have him there and send the regular announcers and they switch to a different team every week, so Santo gets a shot, Garber gets a shot, Weston gets a shot, and kind of gets a shot. Everybody gets a shot, we're dispersed, but a season starts on Thursday, a week from this Thursday, so scrimmage is this week, and then regular season starts in a week and those guys got all those three games before this, before the, before school, you know? So it's exciting. It's that time of year.
And планили, I don't know if you had anybody in планили this year or did he graduate out?